There we go. I think we're in business. I think everybody's here. We've all had our cups of coffee. Call to order, the District of Clearwater Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 2nd, at 2:00 ish PM. Are there any late items anybody would like to add to the agenda? Being done, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Counselor Bradford, seconded by Counselor Taylor. Don't be all opposed to that, so all that passed. Adoption of the minutes. Any errors or omissions? If not, we were to second it, leave. Moved by Counsel Prizzle, seconded by Counsel McKenzie, all those favor, yes, we're all in favor of that. Thank you. Unfinished business. Business promotion, cost estimates from Creative Writers, do we have anything ready on that? Still working on it?
I am still working on it. The one potential person I did relate to them and they responded to a lot. And they liked a more conversation with me and the other person provided the price of under $100. It got based on how many words? About 250 for a paragraph and then a photo. So we could probably do something by taking the photo ourselves. So what I suggest is that you and I can work together on that instead of coming back to council, we don't have very much money, so that's okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Any further questions, comments on that? Being done, moving on to delegations, grant major requests from the North Thompson Arts Council, there's a recommendation. Any discussion on the recommendation from the council or Counsel Taylor?
Already an offer station. We need to have a circular thing going on sometimes where the kind of the Arts Council is saying that they spent their money kind of funding the children's festival and now they're going to be part of the fair festival or like funding all three of them independently combined. So I, you know, I just think, and I don't know whether kind of next year, whether everything will be wrapped under this fair festival and therefore would come as one request. But it feels like there's this domino of different things. We're funding things, but they're funding each other. So just kind of something I think for us to be aware of as we make these decisions.
To overlap, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. I overlap great decisions, we definitely do. I mean, I don't have concerns like we honestly have other things, but we would have been talking about this year if it was happening and against the fair and children's festival may well go ahead.
That was my thought. I thought the air council was actually already canceled.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so they've let this in here as an error. Further questions or comments? Counsel Prizzle?
This, this whole thing confused me too because it was relating to things that have been canceled. So are they doing, wanting to do this this year?
So their application was done in December. And then Ms. Shepherd has been corresponding with the question, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, well, there is also a chart in the council staff report that shows the event sort of being canceled. So it does show, except for, I don't know about children's festival yet, but I talked to Mr. Rasch about it, he said they're just starting to get back together, you know, they're gonna have a meeting coming up and that he will, they'll be discussing if they're gonna have the line around to follow next to share and we'll let us know through the field.
Counsel Simp?
So again, if it can, I, I haven't necessarily been part of an arts crawl, so I don't know what it actually looks like. If anybody could help illuminate me on that, that would be great. So Ms. Shepherd, did they give any indication to you? What, what it may look like or?
I certainly remember one of the past ones, basically they give you a map of locations of various art establishments. Doris' gallery up in the park. So it's basically more like a passport thing where you've got a map and you go around, you get a stamp or you get some of the indication that you could use as many as you can possible. It's a little bit of a combination of the shop local, local and awareness thing and that's probably, that's my understanding of how it works lots of times with the arts.
Okay, and so given the fact that art is, you know, a great facet of our community, I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. I would, I wouldn't, where I'm a little uncomfortable seeing the requests go towards insurance and advertising, I'd be happy to support pretty advertising and think that the insurance could maybe be covered out of their membership and some of those people that are there. That advertising ideal could be leveraged through some other granting organizations. Seems like it's a great tourism opportunity for them as well. People are always saying what, what to do, but I'd like to see our logo on the advertising and make sure that that could be done really, really well. That's my thought.
Okay, thanks. Oh, that's just severe, look at that. Hey, I'm back.
No, you're not.
I'm frozen. I was just being frozen. Anyway, there is a recommendation. Are there any further comments?
Yeah.
Counsel Prizzle?
I'm still, I'm a little concerned with this whole pandemic going on. We're going to have an art crawl, people going to other people's homes. I'd like to see that they have some kind of plan and what they're going to do with that.
So would your wish be that this would be put back to the Arts Council to?
I would like to see what they're planning on doing because I mean, I know it's people, I don't know, I'm just a little uncomfortable with it.
Yeah, but doesn't that get into the management of it? Because it's outside, I mean, that, that, I mean, neither.
Is it outside?
You don't.
Yeah, yeah, for the most part, in most part it's traveling from one location to another. How those people display that is, I know when Doris did it, she had a bunch of stuff on the Barbara building and her gallery. I don't know where else it's going to go at this point. I just know Doris, how Doris did it because I saw it on there on the day.
I think they've done column next place before.
Column next place?
The people, the artist people would be the ones that would say, yes, you can come to my location or outside.
Okay. Counsel Bradford?
Yeah, my understanding is we don't forward the money unless actually the event actually occurs anyhow. So if it does get canceled because of the pandemic or whatever, we wouldn't send the money to them anyhow, I guess. The only other comment I have would be nice for them to look for other funding sources. On the last page, you said they haven't really checked with any of the funding sources. I don't really have a problem with it.
Yeah, so maybe we need to put it back to the first quick update. Is there going to be any changes on it? Or is this still as valid as it is? I'm looking at Ms. Shepherd right now. From your understanding, talk to them, is this all still valid and accurate?
I believe so. They haven't done anything since the pandemic started, so I don't think it's really changed officially, just presented in December.
Who has done anything?
So you could, you could do it on the principle that it actually goes forward, like some of the, so it works.
There's a lay down recommendation here, but somebody wants to add that to the recommendation. The recommendation is the council approved grant aid, proposed $600 to the North Thompson Arts Council, the funds allocated towards an advertising insurance for the 2020 arts. Crawl and art alive event and that fund be distributed upon proof of the event taking place, which actually all made in the recommendation.
I will make, I will make that motion with the amendment of taking out insurance. I'd really like to support their advertising and as we've seen through something, sometimes advertising wanes and I think for this year it needs to be really great. So I'd like to give that full amount to support them in their advertising effort.
Does somebody wish to second that motion because this is being put forward here? Counsel Prizzle seconds that? Yeah, so we have, I've made the motion, so you made the original motion. Counsel Prizzle seconded. Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, all those, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say the advertising, it looks like they're already planning on spending 400, so.
Cool, then we have to figure out a way to spend more. And we move forward with that. So, and that, I think that will be council sent and tagged by what?
$400 doesn't get you a lot, $600 may get you that better quality and it's in our SFU document to support those, the arts, and so I'd like to visibly do so and give that some.
Okay, if there's no further comments, all those in favor. And that is that, thank you. That was a good conversation. Moving on to mayor's reports. Oh, what day of the week is it? I forgot to do that. Anyway, I'll pull up my calendar because, you know, we're a little flacky today. Did that work? I, oh. Moving back in with me, because that was last month. Did a TNRD meeting. Did, missed a phone call at the hospital, they're still looking for housing, is my understanding. So if anybody knows of houses, especially one that's pet friendly, that would be great. Did a agenda setting last week. This morning, presented the loss service award to a couple of retiring firefighters. Jan and Tom are now fully retired. Dan Davay has also got his, what is it, 30 year award? 30 year award, yeah. So 20 year, 20 year awards, 29 for Tom Malad and 30 for Jan.
35.
Right, 35, 35. But some of that was within service with the sewer fire department, but yeah, 35 years doing firefighting is quite exceptional. So that was a nice presentation at the fire hall. Counsel McKenzie was there as well. After that, went to the flood park to see the new playground, which is really neat, looking personal, and met with members of the Rurite Temple and thanked them again for the generous donation. And yeah, had a great conversation with them for a while about the community and cat more, life here and how great this community is and how it all exists, I'm guessing with that. That's basically it for what I had to discuss and do the last couple of weeks that I can think of off the top of my head. Moving on to council reports. Counsel Bradford?
Thank you, yeah. It's been a pretty quiet couple of weeks, just keeping up with emails, added some comments and attended one gathering there at the district. That was it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Prizzle?
Just a few things. Sit and Be Fit is going to continue through the summer on Mondays and Wednesdays. Sabine and Sylvia will be doing the Sit and Be Fit for seniors and so that's great. COPD had their first online session and they had eight people attend, so I was very impressed with that. So they're going to continue as long as they can doing that and then hopefully we'll get back to regular meetings soon. I have, or I haven't, but the seniors society has received funding from the community interior services and the North Thompson Communities Foundation to help seniors affected by COVID. So right now what I'm trying to do is look for seniors that need assistance that haven't been recognized in need. So if any of you have, know of neighbors, family, whatever, seniors that could do with help but may not ask for it, if you could let me know, that would be great. And I just, at the farmers market, the growers collective table is becoming very popular and people are starting to use it and they're bringing their, some of their food right now and putting the money towards donations to food security. So that's also a good thing, so that's my report.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Harriet is the way of family business. See, Counsel McKenzie? Turn on your mic, Counsel McKenzie. Thank you, Counsel McKenzie.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, quite a couple of weeks for myself as well, as Mayor Blackwell mentioned. I did attend the years of service presentation ceremony at the fire department this morning. Small, quiet little group, three guys that are definitely, you're gonna notice their service, especially the one that's, that's retiring. You will notice him gone. It's a good presentation to see happen there. And infrastructure committee of the whole earlier this afternoon, I also attended that. And aside from those things, that was about it for the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Simp?
So I thought the presentations this morning online was a great thing. I think that the streaming was at 167 views. So great way to engage the community, so small and intimate on the ground, but a wide audience, so that was really great in giving acknowledgement to some pretty big titans. I think it was a big week for titans in the community to leave us. I include the Bernie Ethan and doing the drive thru by the hospital. There was probably, I'm gonna say, I don't know, 50, 60 cars there, so a fair few. And also Carol Ratliff of the library. So that's on the heels of Darlene Howey, which is kind of interesting. It's great to see that the farmers market is expanding, also some market energy with Kathy Downey up at the Rockfield area there. Churches starting to open and, and the school, first day of opening today, which was interesting.
No worries.
Yeah, so I think what's gonna be really important about that for our community is that students who are attending school report back what that might look like for September. There's sort of different levels of comfort to it and so I think that this is a really good way to be slow and steady for it. The other thing that I did is I attended a Destination BC. I emailed all of you kind of about that. Marshall Walden, she hosts these each week. And last week it was Mr. Bear who was on it, talking about some of the funding being attached to Destination BC. We've got, Destination BC is going to receive a total of $6 million to go towards major centers and that goes to places like Vancouver, Richmond, Whistler, Casino, Prince George and also Kamloops. And then the remaining 1.5 is going to go to 47 community consortia. Normally Destination Canada doesn't affect in the local market, but given the pandemic, they're switching from the international marketing campaign into the local. Destination BC is embarking on a road to recovery and this mirrors the four stages of the restart plan as initiated by the province. So where this is interesting is that we've got lots of different sectors across the province who are giving their level of comfort. So for example, Casino isn't welcoming anybody but people from British Columbia. So that's their particular local tourism strategy. It's great that they're part of the 4.5 million dollars. And then you've got smaller communities who are saying, we're not ready, we're too far away from areas, we're not ready to welcome. So the purpose of the email that I have sent is just that we start giving some indicators and although it's likely going to happen, we have tourism operators here who have said, no, we're not doing it. I've probably got half a dozen who have said, that's not our comfort level. So just, you know, just sharing out, that will trigger some additional funding because there are another two to three phases. And I think that we want to be a part of that. And I think we also want to be a part of that winter and spring restart money. So some of the strategies that they're going to be talking about is the initiatives around glowing carts, oh my God, we're so well suited for that. Let's love where you live. The other thing that is really interesting is that they are giving $400,000 to particular sectors, that might be back from tree lodges, but also mountain biking. I'm not, there's a lot that Clearwater could do if we wanted to tap into that. I don't know, but you guys, that there isn't a day I don't see at least, you know, four or five trucks with mountain bikes hanging on the back. When we go into some of our strategies, that's not something we've necessarily put a lot of energy towards and yet it meets all of the COVID-19 criteria of the F1s and those trails are in great place. So I, I just, it would just be a great thing, whether it's on our website, a conversation with Tourism of Grey, yeah, you know, we welcome British Columbia to Clearwater or just something that triggers, triggers where we stand.
Yeah, it's an interesting conversation of all the different strategies that two, who you're gonna let in, there's still. And the other factor that I keep watching on this discussion with what tourism is, what was impossible last week is somewhat possible this week and will be completely normal again with the, the way this is going until we, we trip over that next phase of the pandemic and we have to go back. Yeah, it's such a volatile thing, but yes, signaling and discussing with our community, whether it's, I'll do that, Counsel Bradford, definitely right on that, but we need to have a discussion on that and then take one more.
And if I may, is that maybe something that Tourism of Grey takes on? It's not necessarily ours?
I would prefer the Tourism of Grey.
I, I agree, I'm just, I'm bringing it to council that we are alert and alive to some of the funding opportunities out there. It doesn't mean that that isn't something that we could look at for our local opportunities like the mountain biking, which follows under our jurisdiction. And also paying attention to Destination BC, because when you go into their website and if people were to click on, when we come to Clearwater, it's actually Well Grey and when you go to Well Grey, it's actually the, or it's Tourism of Grey. So Clearwater as a destination isn't on the map there. And people will be looking and especially the TNS and you can call that industrial tourism if you want. But, you know, we've got lots of different things and how we want to be a part of that. That's also on the heels of the CED task force, so that's it there.
Counselor Bradford, your turn. Hello? Can I hear you? Oh, sorry, it looked like it was Counsel Taylor. You've already been up, never mind.
Thank you.
Stay there today. Counselor Bradford is the comment on the last. Anyway, keep going. Thank you, Counsel Taylor.
I think you meant that well. We'll give you a moment.
Thank you, Wendy.
So May 19th, I met with the Trail Task Force. We did a slight visit of Salt Lake Beach and kind of discussing the trail coming down from Well Grey intersection. So that was a really good conversation, good meeting. And, gosh, my microphone might fall too.
So, can you have a discussion about the handicap trail or is that the one you're talking about?
Oh, no, that wasn't about the handicap.
Accessible trail.
Accessibility trail. It was about just the main trail coming down from, from Well Grey intersection down to the lake and kind of where parking would be relative to the trail and.
That made on the link or roundabout to Well Grey?
Yeah, instruction on that.
Yeah. That was the trial. Yeah, I think I covered that in my last report. Because that was what we had to, council meeting on the 19th. So there was nothing else. But excited to have my kids back in school this weekend. That's why I have the update.
I think there's a lot of people. Thank you for the two more.
We're here for the restart.
Here for the restart. Thank you for that. Committee of the whole meetings, economic development committee, the whole meeting held in May 19th, there's recommendations.
Um, can we just go back? I actually think that was the Trail Committee meeting, what date was that, the 19th?
We have one on the 19th.
Yeah, but that was in the evening, right? So there is actually an update.
Yeah, but the, the one, the meeting from the 12th was the one.
And I am, can you just do a quick recap about how it's going to the roundabout? I do need a refresher.
Okay, so for the roundabout one, there's actually talk of putting it kind of behind the Well Grey end as opposed to originally, you know, thinking about kind of coming down the front, the original right of way in front of the Well Grey end. It's likely it will go around the back. There was one proposal that kind of didn't direct people directly from the roundabout, went right through kind of left and right, I think. But the concern with that would just be in terms of anyone coming out of town has finding that trail to be able to kind of follow it down. And so I think the, the thinking is still that we would work on what's currently there and then take it behind.
And then the Well Grey, from the roundabout to the first second last pole on the highway because it's really small between the, the Tim Markens there and the edge of the bank? Yeah, it would actually be curved guy to the second pole along the highway above. And you're probably.
Okay, and just a question on that, how are, how are the, how's the neighborhood responding going up towards Park Road right now?
Good, now.
Okay, great, thank you very much for that.
So my point is if I happen already updates on May 12th, I think.
It's an evolving situation.
Yeah, well, there's so much changing too, right? And you've got one of the most byword committees there, so. Lots going on, exactly. Economic Development, we had.
You got the recommendation, I didn't even have.
Well, let's do the recommendations.
You're removing the recommendation, somebody seconded by Counsel McKenzie, I'll be on the line there, all those in favor. And then you're gonna go right into your committee of the whole report, economic development, funny how that comes up.
How funny is that? So we did have a meeting on the 26th, I think that was, and we had the vast majority of our committee members. It was done really well, we did it here in the district office with adequate spacing. It was still a bit odd, but tons better than doing it over Zoom. So we were successfully able to create some partnerships, hear some really interesting dialogues. And really we're moved to a point where the committee is ready to take on, looking at bigger projects and bigger visions and what does Clearwater want to be when they grow up in 25 years. So I think it might be our third giant in the room standing next to the Trail Task Force and Forest Working Group. I also wonder if there isn't going to be at some point in time Forest Working Group needing to roll into that committee with their recommendations, not the committee as its whole, but those recommendations could channel through this group?
But after they take that into the committee, they.
Well, I'm just saying where their recommendations go could funnel in nicely to dovetail with the economic development. So then it moves through an actual committee of the whole with council. Because that's what they're doing, driving economy. So I just want to be really clear, not suggesting rolling the committee, Forest Working Group into the CED. They have great ideas that might need to be shared with the community economic development.
The report, one committee.
Exactly, the report. I just, I got everybody's face drop and I just need to.
Because thinking that I was envisioning their recommendations, first word of your recommendations happened to go to the economic development committee task force, then coming to council.
No, just that there's more parallel because it's that same big vision and role, that's what I'm talking about there. Anyway, it was, it was really good and they're quite keen to meet in, in June again. Also, the survey has gone out to community and businesses. Do you know where we're at for the business?
Today, I'm not, I don't, but yeah, today was a 15 for business, 126 for community. And we pushed out the business again, yeah, we pushed out. That's the wrong link, so I know people are paying attention, Dr. Bradley, and I didn't get the numbers.
Okay.
But yeah, no, I definitely, at least five people who mailed back and got the wrong link and I don't trust them much, so I know that they'll at least be answering.
Good, so overall, we're getting some, some great uptake and I think that's attributed to the quality of our labs are based and that we're asking and listening, so thank you very much.
It's been also put through the business director, which includes area A businesses, with all their mail addresses have been connected to it as well, but not just the private business, like, actually I was trying to.
Yeah, and I really appreciate the questions too because visitors have been in and gave us an email and so they probably needed a hand to see that again, so thank you. Anyway, that is economic development.
Okay, thank you. Infrastructure, Counsel McKenzie? You can turn your mic off again.
How's that?
Welcome to the joy of Zoom, thank you.
I'll get, by the time I get used to this, we'll be all in the office again. Anyway, yeah, thank you, yeah, we had our infrastructure committee of the whole meeting prior to council today and we had a few good reports, a couple of really good presentations. It's, it's a shame we had a time constraint, so we weren't able to, able to maybe get a little more information in there, but lots to read. It surprised me that, looking at, at the report on the roads, as bad as they are, there was actually, it doesn't look as bad when you see the color coded priorities. Uh-oh, we lost you.
I have no problem hearing you, I imagine, but it seems like Lucy and Merlin and all those are a bit off.
Um, yeah, you never did lose me there?
No, I never did lose you.
No, see, you and I could have had a conversation.
Three of us, three of us can carry the meeting on.
Might as well.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah, why not?
All the other, all the other four went.
I keep forgetting about these timeouts, or that forty-minute timeout, and then it.
Oh, yeah, there's the mayor looking at his best.
We'll just have our own little thing here.
Yeah, we, we can solve all the communities' problems, just ask.
We can, should we just call for adjournment?
Yeah, let's do it. Are you not? Oh.
We're back.
Are you back?
No.
Hey, we're unmuted.
But we just called for adjournment.
Yeah, call for adjournment.
You said call for adjournment, I would have spent a bunch more money.
Uh, okay. Councilor McCandie.
Where were we?
Your introduction and then the rest disappears. So for the record, can you back up to there, my flapping, outy beard and whatever else? Start again, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we had, uh, infrastructure committee meeting there prior to council today. And, uh, four very good reports, uh, two good presentations there with lots of information taken. Good reports, it does, it was surprising to see that, uh, with our roads, as bad as we are, as bad as we think they are driving around them and what we hear from the community, looking at their color-coded priorities, it didn't seem as bad, aside from a couple sections that we know aren't going to change until they're repaired. But it was, uh, it didn't look as bad on, on a PowerPoint as opposed to hearing people around the community or what we see ourselves.
Yeah, I think a quick comment on that is go to the maritime. Listen to them talk about their roads out there under our route. I think you full plenty, yes, we do have.
They make ours look good after a week in Winnipeg.
Yeah, okay, yeah, for sure. Uh, moving on, uh, Council Harriet is away, next park and rock meeting is June sixteenth. Uh, Council Taylor, financial audit.
Next financial audit meeting is December fourth.
Uh, moving to standings, many reports. Council Fizzle, joint services advisory committee.
Next meeting, July thirteenth.
And Council Taylor again, Trail Task Force.
Yep, next one's June ninth.
Council Sim, junior council, anything to report?
Uh, no, not really. The only thing is, is I was approached by the students and they're still really struggling about how they can celebrate their grad this year. And they want to do, uh, some things that involve, uh, the community and a visible presence. We talked a bit about this at last meeting. Um, so they did come forward and they asked if the district would be willing to partner in one way, shape or form, uh, around the highway banner. And the idea that's been put forward is that there would be a sign, a banner would basically say, you know, "Congratulations, grads," not necessarily twenty-twenty, but that it's a, um, a rotational thing and be put up. It's actually a really nice tribute. We've got lots of grads, whether it's the kindergarten grads, the grade seven grads, high school grads, university grads, because we did just see Harvard grads, um, from Clearwater, Ross and Bowdrie.
Oh, right.
Um, masters from Harvard, kind of interesting. So we do have it, um, you know, banners run anywhere between eight hundred and fifty to twelve hundred dollars, um, which is probably a little bit out of our, our, our reach. Um, and I had put back to them that if there were some other groups that wanted to partner, uh, so I'm bringing it to council, even if it's just the hanging of the banner, because I think there's a requirement attached to that.
I won't put it publicly, but there's, there's a company that's good for it.
Um, so I don't know if, uh, you know, through the district we've got that means, um, or if that's the direction we want to go, um, but it, it would be nice.
Do you mean, do you mean I have to do some public announcement with, uh, junior council? Keep us updated, we need now that, that whole, I think.
Well, I need some money.
Okay, well, you didn't pay that.
Well, I, well, I'm looking for to partner, so, uh, they would like a banner, um, to put up. I think that there's room to have a legacy attached to it. Um, we don't have a lot in our, in our money because our grant and aid policy. Um, I am grateful for their work, the fact that it's been about six thousand dollars that they've given, is it about six for the different water dispensers now, is that right? Or is it?
By the time we went up another one, it's probably forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred dollars, uh, that they've worked. So even if, uh, the district felt comfortable with two hundred and fifty dollars towards that, um, project.
Can you say that as a recommendation?
I'd like some discussion on it.
Any, any thoughts from anybody else? Council Fizzle?
Is there, um, anything from the parent advisory? Do, uh, do they have any money? I mean, no, they don't. Just, I'm just trying to think of other options. But I like the idea. I think it would be good to acknowledge them. And they're getting a raw deal this year, so it'd be nice to know that they're being thought of.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, we definitely need to do something. I mean, this was the most important night of my life, thinking about this back. And it's heartbreaking knowing that these guys don't get that moment. It, it, it's hard on me just to see it, and you know, and I'd like to do something for them, if we can, whatever avenue we can.
Okay, and, and I always agree with that, um, going to grad where I didn't actually graduate, but it's nineteen seventy-two, fourth, and though it's not considered the highlight of your life, but it was at the Hotel Vancouver, so that was okay. Um, but yes, uh, two hundred and fifty, I, I would second the two hundred and fifty, um, dollar, if you can find that on a grad date, or where can we, where can we find it?
Can you second?
You can second, yeah, you can second, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't. Um, but.
I'll second that.
At this particular point, Council Sim actually hasn't technically made the motion yet, so.
I will make the motion. Our discussion that, uh, the district of Clearwater put two hundred and fifty dollars towards a banner, um, and to look at funding and assisting, helping it get up.
You're seconding that?
Oh, for discussion.
Okay, now the discussion part, we should have actually done with that before we got it, to be technically correct.
Well, let's vote it down.
So, well, no, it's fine, I mean, it's, uh, um.
So there is, there is background development contingency, and then there is the council contingency.
And grad name is a perfect point, you're having people draw out a grad name, it's, I mean, so there's really, can we find it?
I, I have conjecture that the council.
Council, it is a council contingency, I think, from council contingency, that's why it would be. I don't think I'm going to U V C M for travel this year. Uh, you know, I think everything's going to be in Zoom, which is cheap, because it doesn't involve mileage.
Is it possible, we're not in such a car? But if twelve hundred dollars is possible to have up to five hundred?
No, I think you, you're just asking two fifty is the money for this, and if it doesn't happen, then it's mine, and let me go from there. Now, so you've been five hundred, so.
Well, I'm just saying, just realistically, I guess, I don't know who your partners are going to be. So I'm just saying, if it, if it doesn't, it's up to two fifty for a proper banner. Um, they may seem frivolous, but I think our views have been really important.
By a friendly amendment, up to five hundred dollars.
Can.
Will you, are you going to support the friendly amendment?
I will support the friendly amendment. Can, can we review the design?
We could probably ask them.
With the condition that our logo was on it?
And it's not a twenty twenty.
That was very clear. If, if this is more of a legacy thing to be able to, to be done, that we, we were quite clear on that for the conversation.
Okay. Uh, further discussion for council. All those in favor? And that is that. Okay, where are we on the agenda, anyway?
Oh, Forest Working Group.
And that's actually Council Baffert now, at least.
Oh, yeah, July first.
Hold on, it's July first, hold on a minute.
Hurry up, one more. Uh, next meeting will be June nine. Next meeting will be June ninth.
Thank you. Sorry, we lost a little audio there for a second. Uh, how's that?
Just really quickly for the meeting on June ninth, we've got Darcy Peel that'll be dialing in on the careful habitat.
Yeah.
We have Rachel that'll be talking about the, um, the new pilot that the council, uh, the council supplier is doing on one state plan.
Okay.
And we have Mike Simpson dialing in on the World Gray table. We just, we just got the agenda yesterday, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to you yet.
Good, I mean, that's, those are, that's pretty much the heavy-hitting, all the major topics that we're dealing with in this area, so, um, yeah, I think, um, hopefully we can figure out a way to get that information out.
Oh, and then we're gonna have Tara Batte talk about the, the program that, um, where it was been employed at the center.
Right.
That was, yeah. Just understand what I thought.
Yeah, and I'll see on that, that would be good. So I was actually really wondering about that one the other day with, um, um, after the community transition call, two words after that. Um, okay, cool, excellent, thank you for that. Um, exciting stuff to have all these people, especially Darcy Peel in the room because they're on the line, because, uh, now Tara, there's been a lot of bad press on that, both the fact that it's actually failing, uh.
Yeah.
Because of, because of things going on there. Uh, tourism, World Gray, I'm not sure when the next meeting is happening at this point. Um, they did not meet forum last time. Uh, well, hey, I mean, Forest Mission, Council Taylor, ooh, she's in here.
I have a very, very exciting recommendation to bring before council, um, and that is that the World Great Community Forest Commission established a scholarship in the name of Ted Richardson, dedicating twenty thousand for a ten-year to two thousand per year to students or students that are well-rounded, interested in the same core of street and community development or environmental studies. And that the commission will be designated as a selecting body for the annual scholarship application. Um, sorry, I, I almost had a chance to kind of re-listen about the birthday, but, um, I, I think it's a great way to honor Ted Richardson and, um, his contributions, um, to the community and to the community forests. Um, and, uh, and yeah, I think there's a subcommittee who are going to review the birthday applications to pick out some well-deserving students. I have a question.
Uh, question for Councilor Sim.
So is ten years, two thousand dollars per, per year, per, for a student? Is that what I'm understanding?
Uh, I think it should be split.
So it can be split, but it, it each year will be two thousand dollars? Okay.
Um, somebody want to second the recommendation?
I will.
Okay, uh, any further discussion coming? Yeah, it's kind of, uh, you know, the head's smiling face on there, I can't believe it's gone, Ashley. And, uh, but this is a great way to honor him, for sure. There was a lot of discussion at the commission table, the email and et cetera about doing this. And, uh, yeah, a lot of support.
And to include community development, which was so near to the heart. Like, that's outstanding.
Okay, all those in favor? And, uh, thank you. Task force, alternative approval process, loan for wastewater treatment, file number one. Um, while that speaks to this.
So this is a, uh, pre-verse third, it's not in the staff report. In August of two thousand and eighteen, the council did pass a resolution to apply for the investment in county grants, which is seventy-three cents dollars. And then after that, we also applied for the hundred cent dollar one tomorrow, so we use them in the following February. We were successful on this one first, so we had to choose, we couldn't choose, basically. So we went forward and on January twenty-first, twenty twenty, council did pass a regulation to put forward the loan authorization bylaw, um, kind of the structure that's listed in the background. And so now in order to, uh, fulfill the fund, the last part of the district share of the funding, which was five hundred and eighty-five thousand, an alternate approval process is required, which enables both governments to directly engage with citizens, both before the bylaws intend to undertake long-term borrowing. Um, it's not, the only, the other alternative would be a referendum. A referendum is usually those five thousand, same, same amount of money as an election. The alternative approved the process of those thousand dollars. And, um, under section eighty-six of the change of charter, and everyone coming to do it, there's also an excessive manual that sort of lets the government unhelped process go. So under the charter, council must establish a deadline for the receipt of an electoral response. They must establish electoral response form with the criteria that's listed in the staff report. And they must make a fair determination of who and what electoral in the area which the approval process applies. The deadline of submission, I will do a date correction, because the report was originally written for the May nineteenth meeting. I apologize for not picking that paragraph. So the deadline of submission for the electoral response form may be, um, no sooner than thirty days after the second publication, which is, uh, shown on, uh, a calendar on page fifty of the council agenda, um, and it has to be in a little newspaper. The following, June second instead of May nineteenth, council meeting, the next edition of Clearwater Times will be published on June, um, that we will put this in, because we will miss, we've already missed this Thursday, it'll be June the eleventh, and then it will be on June the eighteenth as well. So by setting a deadline for the submission for the electoral response form, it will be July twentieth, which is actually thirty-two days, because of weekends, or on weekends or thirty days. The fair determination of the number of lectures is outlined on page, um, sixty-one of your report. So, uh, you take the, um, last, that's the data that you got, which is two thousand and sixteen. Um, and it was predicted that there would be a point three or five population growth in this area by twenty twenty, about the use of calculations. And then you got to calculate based on the, the, the status data, uh, how many residents are eighteen years or older. They do list out zero to five, you know, five to nine and so on, so that's not too difficult to do. This provides a percentage to use to calculate the estimated level of lectures for the sewer service area, because it's not a whole entire municipality that we're going to be visiting, it's only a small area. Um, we have two hundred and fifty-two properties on the sewer service, uh, the number of the base, the base in properties is fifty-two, so that may be with, um, two hundred and ten. Uh, the number of residents over eighteen is approximated at three hundred and twenty-nine. And ten percent of that would be thirty-three. So what the ten percent is, um, means that if we have thirty-three, thirty-four people that vote to turn down the, uh, alternate approval process, then we have to vote a really different way of voting.
Or we have the option to go to referendum.
Or we can go to referendum, that's what I mean, so you go to a different, please go to referendum. And if you didn't want to spend the money on referendum, then you could also look at taking the money from the general, we have to go internally, which still would end up being a cost to your users.
Right.
Uh, the service area map has been attached. Um, the one that will go up to the, in the mail-in will actually be, um, one member, the house member we want. He, um, our engineer did it first, and he rushed off to, um, for his wife to have a baby. So we didn't get a way to that level, but that's okay, as long as, um, we have the one that has number nine for the mail-in. Um, the response form is attached for you, the financial implications of this is about a thousand dollars. The district's Clearwater share, the project cost after sending home the children's grant and development cost, which was approved in the previous staff report, would be five hundred and eighty-five thousand, including the interest, which would be borrowed from municipal finances already and repaid over fifteen-year periods. There are a couple options to make up the district share of this project. Option one is the five eighty-five, funded by boosting water customers used through an annual parcel tax, one hundred and twenty for parcel, or a one-time fee upfront of twenty-two thirty-two for parcel. The summary below outlines the project cost and funding sources, and then calculates the two options available for the sewer, um, borrowing, or if option two would be to borrow five hundred and sixty thousand, and how we come up with that, as we said, we would pull , um, twenty-five thousand from the subsidy receiving reserve, and that's justifiable by fact, it's one of the reasons we're having that freeze, because we brought subsidy receiving coming in and creating, uh, uh, being a compliance.
Right.
Um, then we would look at, um, the annual cost of borrowing would be forty-two thousand, and then the annual contributions. Then we would look at, um, funding, instead of doing a parcel tax, which was option one, which we talked about, would be a hundred and seventy dollars or the twenty-two hundred dollars. We could look at, uh, user fees from the sewer system, which would be thirty thousand a year. And then some contribution from the subsidy system, that's twelve thousand and sixty-six, which would mean there would be an average of a hundred and fourteen fifty annually to the user fees within the system. Um, this would obviously be balanced out, so a household wouldn't necessarily pay the hundred and fourteen fifty, because if you're in an apartment building, the twenty-sixty, you're paying a certain amount of money, you know, account ground, et cetera. Um, the strategic priorities that are identified, where we identify the water system as part of the council strategic priorities in two thousand and sixteen. Also, we recognize that in order to grow the community, uh, with any kind of economic development. investors, we do need to upgrade our sewer systems, and, um, it was out of compliance, so again, to add more housing or anything else that needed to be upgraded. Public consultation would be the legislative requirement would be followed, which is section eighty-six, nineteen, fourteen charter, where we're required to do two consecutive, um, ads in the newspaper, um, and then while, when we did the water and alternative approval process, we also did a mail-out to each household on the system. We would do the same with this. And then online consultation consultation strategy would be following June counseling, the required advertising will be focused in the newspaper, Facebook, and newsletter, and then, um, we will be doing another newsletter. We're going to get back on track. This time, the newsletter goes up this week, that's the beginning of July, that'll also be when I left my this through public. And, uh, we were going to have an open house on June sixteenth in the evening at six-thirty, so people can come to that as well. Um, let me see what I have there. And then there's the options to consider, which is option one, that I spoke about, option two, or option three, would be to abandon the borrowing by law after reading and borrowing finally from the general government first class to cover the district portion of the funds required to complete construction of upgrades, um, to the system, and then internal borrowings would have to be paid back on an annual basis by an increase of user fees. So either option two or three would, um, be user fees, and option one would be a parcel tax. Sewer users already pay a forty dollars annual parcel tax, and, um, this would increase, uh, to two hundred and ninety. And, um, um, you have before you, the bylaw itself after reading, the statute of approval by the mentor after reading, which is a requirement. There's the calendar, uh, of events, somehow it has to roll out, the alternative approval process, approval of, um, electoral count as that was derived, so that, um, you could see, you know, we came up with those numbers. Then there's a copy of the actual, um, election form. If you're a non-resident, only one person bumping on the property tax rule would be the, uh, voter. If you live with the community, uh, you can ask your sophomore to vote. And then we're also required to do a notice with the alternative approval process, which I have to have a question on as well on first paragraph, it should say a hundred and fourteen fifty from the user fees, not one fifty ninety. And then the map also looks. So you have a recommendation before you that, um, where the district declarator council has given free reading to loan authorization by the number two thirty-five twenty twenty, which proposed a construction improvement to the wastewater system, so on. And the divenger not to exceed five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and eighty-five minus the initial contribution of twenty-five from the septic receiving reserve fund and theory fees of thirty thousand and twelve to sixty-six from the septic receiving operating annul. Be obtained to finance the construction of the improvement to the wastewater system, so on, which will be repaid over a period not to exceed fifteen years. And whereof the district declarator council cannot adopt by law two thirty-five twenty twenty until the approval of the electors has been obtained. And therefore, we have revolved with the corporate officer undertaking alternative approval process to determine the opinion of the electors regarding the matter. And that it be further revolved that a thirty-day notice from committing receiving electoral response forms is settled and the deadline for submission for wastewater upgrade loan authorization alternative approval process. Electoral response form may four P M. on Monday, July the twentieth.
Are there any questions for the staff or comments on this? Uh, Councilor Sim first.
Could you just remind me of the number that we would need in opposition?
Thirty-three?
The total thirty-three. Okay, thank you.
And then, yeah, I can figure it out anyway. Uh, further questions or comments? Uh, oh, Councilor Banff.
I just want to, uh, thank staff for, I had quite a conversation this morning with staff, and it was very informative. And I really appreciated the conversation. It cleared up a lot of things for me. And one interesting thing that a, a secondary call was that if we do have a divenger, you can pay out to the divenger on every five-year term. So when you hit five years, if you did come up with some other money, you could pay off the rest of the divenger.
Oh, okay. That's what, yeah.
So there was some way of coming up with a grant of some sort that's not restricted.
Right.
Uh, it would be a grant for a donation, a fixed amount.
Yeah.
You could put one there.
Okay. Good. Okay, uh, I need to move on to the second round of, uh, we should proceed.
More discussion?
Uh, more discussion, Councilor Sim.
So I think last time we did this, we did it on an approval basis, right?
Yep, that was the water.
It was the water.
And it did go through.
Yeah, so I, I was the recommendation.
Move by Councilor Sim, second round.
Okay.
Councilor, please, I think further discussion. Well, I just know where they project and hopefully it's, uh, find it their hearts to go forward with the approval. All those in favor? And that's helpful. Thank you for the excellent work on that process. And now, keep the fun. Uh, we need a whole review. Um, but, uh, I started reviewing up for the, yeah.
No, I just wondered, um, I've just seen some, some messages. I'm wondering if they are recorded as part of the Zoom or, or not.
Messages on the Zoom chat to support the, how do we get one here for more?
Uh, okay. Uh, no, no, I'm just wondering in general, because I'm going to be popped up like within the forty minutes. I'm wondering if they are captured or not, they're just, okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Um, committee of the whole review, recommendation that council moved to the split auction, committee of the whole meeting format whereby the council, the committee of the whole meetings will be held once per month on a designated date, uh, same time each month, and the commanding chair follow the acting chair, which is scheduled. Um, we've got a clip, you want to say anything further?
Another alternative to the acting chair rotation could be the person, so if, um, Councilor McKenzie is the infrastructure person, he would, uh, talk about that subject during the one meeting. Uh, Councilor Sim with the economic development, she would talk about the economic development, Councilor Taylor would talk about finance. So you could still structure that way, as long as you, so the mayor would pick up the committee, and then each of the people that have, have a portfolio, that they're in charge of, would speak to that plan or ideas. No idea behind this one, um, the reason that I was favored is because I find that, um, we don't, uh, always have enough time to really digest and talk about the subject, like the road strategy, for example, or the water today. We could have done a little bit more time, so that we could have capitalized. Let's go, you could have seen, just even have an idea of, of the eighteen million that we could have captured. Um, there's other time when we're, you know, like in the middle of the winter, we don't have anything going on in parks, we do a meeting try to figure out, um, some subjects, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I still like the idea of moving into the, just also the time when we have double presentation.
Yes.
Um, where we're, you know, we're talking to Mary Parodi, and just looking in camera part, but sometimes we all know that earlier, one, whenever you're presenting for fifteen to twenty minutes just to have in the public domain, a secondary meeting, or it's actually, it's the both of those.
It also gives council time to think about, in between the meeting and the actual council meeting. Other things that might not go during their, um, meeting at all.
Um, and it also gives the two, the needs of each, I mean, it doesn't need to start at two o'clock. I do like the idea of still retaining the, um, committee of the whole end point of the chair of the whole meeting.
On page sixty and sixty-one, um, thanks from Miss Matt, she put together sort of like the pros and cons of each style.
Okay. Any discussion, comments? Councilor Jordan?
Uh, like, I, I love the efficiency of the blended options, um, but I think that was the risk of having too much in conversation. Um, so I think that split options, I'll be slightly ahead of my favorites. Um, the only issue is the split option with the current proposed times is paid over for me personally, uh, so I couldn't do eleven o'clock, um, in the morning. But anything happening to a clock in the afternoon or later, I can get on it.
Oh, see, on, yeah, those, those are just remember. Yeah, that has been about what time, sorry, that's sorry. That doesn't mean not when the meeting would actually happen, that was an example of when it could happen.
Okay, yes.
Just to give the other people the idea how it actually works.
Yeah. So essentially, the, the key thing there is whether we have it on the same day or on the council meeting, or we have it on a
Uh, I would recommend an alternate to me.
Further questions, comments? Councilor Sim?
So technically, it's the potential of three days a week, three days a month of meetings.
What's the order of time frame?
Which isn't always relative, because I find that, you know, there's, there's a lot. Like, it could be a two-hour meeting, or, or longer, actually. Um, so, you know, I, I, I love the context of it, um, but, um, I, I fear a full day meeting, but I fear.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I don't really have much problems with status quo. Um, I would like, uh, but I, I also don't have a problem with the idea of having the committee meeting to hold, which would be, you know, like but with the, still, still the chairs, we have like, as far as I was having on.
And the other thing we put those in terms of, um, like, once you work in the middle of the hour, we have a maxing time frame. For us, maybe they may, we have a maxing time frame, and we have done it where we actually said, okay, we're ten minutes, because of ten and one, we do.
Anything else?
Our topic is still big, while we're carrying on the next meeting.
So with that two to five, I noticed that two to five is embarrassing, it's something that the, the suggestions, um, Councilor Taylor.
Uh, I'd love to kind of get the perspective on a level of effort from a staff, staff, staff level. Like, is it easier to have it all happening off one day in one meeting? Or is it easier to, like, come back to chunks from a, from a staff perspective? This is that side question.
Um, the problem I thought about me, because I personally would do this in the evening, because I find it cuts into my productivity, but both other staff would be because it's hard to pass. Right, um.
Do you want to find her in the way?
Well, I think Councilor Banff.
Oh, yeah, then Councilor Banff are far away.
You know, I, uh, I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't particularly like the blended. I don't have a problem with the current status either. I really don't have a problem with the split. My concern with the split is, I mean, you might end up with a meeting that's going to be from three or four hours long, if you're going to have long discussions on several topics. Um, and having it three days a week, one, you know, three weeks, one meeting. Um, not a particular issue. I mean, you just have to pick the week you're going to travel if you had to miss one. Um, I just don't know whether we could do, like, today, this meeting could have went probably an hour and a half. And if you have something with economic development, that could add another hour onto it fairly easily, or whatever, depending upon the length of the discussion. So I guess I'd be a little concerned on the length of the meeting that it might end up. The other thought, I guess, that flowed through my head was, when would you have the meeting if you're going to have it on a separate day? I know we've had some discussion about a meeting at different times of the day from different people that come, uh, different people come in the evening and stuff like that, so I don't know, right now, whether we'd make a decision or not, but even I'm comfortable the way that it is right now, even if we had a larger topic, even if we had to start a half hour earlier, I still don't mind that, like, twelve-thirty versus one. If you have a lot of things on your agenda like today.
Councilor Sim?
Um, so I, I think for me, I, I, I lean towards the, the split. I, I think it makes sense, because when things come up, it's, there's, there's a lot more relevance to it. I wouldn't mind just charting it out on a, a calendar, because I look at how much time we put into the budget in particular this year. And then to throw in another committee meeting, I love this job, but I actually have to work. Um, and so I, I, I worry about what that means, and I worry about what that means for future councils and some of those time commitments. So if we could grasp it and see what it might look like. But I do think that there's some, some real guts to the fact that sometimes we don't address parks and rec, and we've got lots of things that are going on there, but it's almost too late, and then it's already hurt. It's wait, 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 hurry. And it, that's not effective for the, for the operations. I'd also say we're looking at, maybe we do a breakout, so our, um, community economic development task force becomes the economic development committee. They push through recommendations to council.
Um, you could do that.
Right? And so you've got the heavy lifting that's being done by a group, and then you, you move that forward.
We're going to take one, one committee out of the playbook.
Okay, um, any further comments? Uh, I'm going to make a suggestion here. Um, I think we need to think about this one more. I think we can table this one, and, and let's, let's do on this one first. Till another meeting, I don't think there's a, the need to rush on this one. Um, you know, I think we're just starting to just digest all the, uh, pros and cons and issues, even with the report, um, all the things we don't think about, so, um.
The chart was very helpful.
Yeah, for sure. No, I mean, it, it made, it made me think about things that I had to consider with the whole process, um, for sure. If anybody doesn't object to that, we can table that. Do we need to, most, you know, most table?
Nope, you're just not, you're not council.
So if, if, does anybody feel the dire need to pass this today or recommendation today? If not, we'll just move on, uh, for now, if, if we don't, I don't, I don't.
No, I think that's good, 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 good stuff.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of back this year, including working in time of day and evenings and everything else that we as well as the, 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 the level of work involved. Okay, good. Uh, moving on to temporary expanded service area authorization, is that the one we're on next?
Yeah.
Right, so there's a recommendation within, this is basically allowing cannabis businesses.
The change, um, for the afternoon, May twenty-second, and during the weekend, I got an email from somebody, because they got all the businesses that have licenses within the community got the same thing, so I had to quickly put together the report, because it does, so if it's, uh, liquor primary, um, then the council does need to say what they convey to your relationship with the board directly to counter to the liquor board if it's a food primary, as long as they stay within their occupancy numbers, they can expand the third, um, area a bit without coming through a council process. Um, so if anybody wants to do it, they only can do it to walk over the reverse, which didn't make any sense to make them go through an allocation process, then come to council. Because we only have council meeting July fourteenth and one on July seventh every time. So if this is, um, based on the directives, we, we, we would provide them, then I would board it up to the liquor department.
I'm about to watch.
Comment?
Question?
Yeah, question?
Um, no.
Councilor Taylor first.
Just for clarification, uh, they would have to stay on their own property, right? There's no approaching of, you know, anything like that.
They would have to come to council if they wanted to go on to the streets, like in the city council.
Right.
Yeah, they must have done a Tuesday, and then they came right in for.
Yeah.
Will they have, okay, a resolution that they were dealing with, or, yeah, some of their property, so they, so the well drains are, um, could have found the back of it.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Uh, were you seconding that as well, Councilor Taylor?
I can do.
If you wish to. Um, second of a Councilor Taylor, all in favor?
Discussion.
Uh, you, you want more discussion?
No, 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 no.
More discussion, I think it'd be great.
I think so.
Let us go through, yeah, so do I. Um, okay, that moves to, we don't have any bylaws, no correspondence, uh, response required. Uh, correspondence information items, waived practically, because I'm looking down, reading through, if you'd like to comment on any of them. Uh, letter from the Mr. of Children Valley Village, Child and Youth Care Week. Uh, U B C M, Community Excellence Program Awards, or Excellence Awards. Uh, letter from the
You got there.
Okay, U B C M, Councilor Sim.
Do you want to do anything on that?
Uh, the only one that I saw might fit, um, if you want to look under papers. Was the Community Rescue Program under, um, I have one from South Korea.
Okay, anybody on council, like, that idea on Justice for Bellator? I mean, I think the adaptation to online program.
Okay. I just didn't hear her, so that's good, okay.
Yeah, I, I'm behind the, if you get right.
If you want to submit that, does that, uh?
Yeah, so you have to do a council role, which is required.
Okay.
So you're paying the support for the project.
I keep losing video here, people, so, um, yeah, there we go, five seconds, ten seconds. I keep losing video here, people, so um yeah, there we go, five again, with ten seconds. Um does somebody wish to make a motion on putting that forward?
I remember we uh moved, I remember that we put forward the uh community recreation um programming through COVID nineteen forward as a submission to U B C M.
Other excellent, excellent.
Yes.
Seconded by councillor Taylor, third is by councillor Prizzle.
And.
Further, further comments?
Yeah, and with that certainly tying in, um that whole well-being component, the numbers are just huge.
Yes.
The and the engagement to the valley as a whole, so it was real community building capacity on a large scale.
Yeah, I use it as examples. I'm sure other people at the table are using examples of how you can translate these things. A lot of people are quite shocked by the numbers that are of people that are using this online, um and that it's basically like, once this is all overspeed to um more users for the program.
And I've heard a number of men, and we've talked about that a lot, but a lot of men have been using, especially learning yoga and stretching. T M S, all of their staff have to do a stretching beforehand. Um so some people, you know, they do it with various, I've never done yoga with a cigarette in my mouth, but um it is, but it's also giving some extra resources that they're able to tap into outside of work, so I think it's brilliant. So I'm glad that that's something we would want to do. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, excellent. So uh any further discussion before we say all in favor?
Yeah.
Oh, councillor Prizzle.
I just wanted to comment on also with Vic's mayor's reports every day, that a lot of people are commenting on how they've been, she's been so helpful when they're having really bad days. So that's been part of it as well, not just the exercise.
Yeah, good, good comment.
Yeah, good point. Um there's definitely been noted the last couple of weeks, the stress on mental health and uh to have that component to the program. I think it's an absolute uh achievement and and thought on adding that to the program, for sure.
The bargaining part of the team, um we're getting.
Yeah. The guarding part, the lead part, there's there's all sorts of, it it's, I think it's just expanded the program in a in a way that I think will, you know, in a way that is such a positive movement for, and is such a good example to other communities, for sure. All of them in favor? And that's happened. Thank you. We'll get that submission. What's that word I have? Uh letter from the R C N P, re R C N P, COVID safe return to workplace plan. Uh councillor online question, we have a question.
So I'm, um it's not necessarily supposed to be pertaining to the council agenda, but um it's a good question. So it's on the agenda, um um the response would be that the program, this is the P N P program. It brings out kind of sort of on um a little bit of the, it's not a hole that it's having issues, because of the federal government implementing the travel restrictions to air and land. Um so chatting with um our regional rep, uh this would be something that the economic development committee and task force should actually look at. Would it be a priority? Um because we're bringing people, so they have to invest a hundred thousand, and then making little difference to your community. It's a bit of a, apparently they've got a little staff, have people up there, and like have to look into this, and the.
I I was curious on this, because I thought that there was a federal program that was sort of the umbrella, that if you had a hundred thousand dollars, you could actually invest anyway. So I I was confused why this came through on a local level.
Well, in the quarter of the barrier program, I I was aware of the barrier.
So bear, so um in the North Hoston region, barrier, merit, and Clinton have bind into it.
Okay.
So I would like to do a little bit of tapping in and finding out what, because I've been told that the staff capacity is very excessive.
Okay.
Um running and tracking the program, so checking with that, and then the also the separate, even the highest people. But the other part of it is, I don't think that we should dismiss it at all, though definitely looked into it, because there are people, um I believe we had, well, maybe we had that actually a couple of years ago, three thousand plus on the P N P program, that wasn't getting successful, I think, but others look at.
So with that, will we be looking at the difference between this program and the federal program?
Well, this feeds in, federal feeds into the provincial.
And I just wonder, is this at a different level of a download? That's that's what I'm wondering.
Um so that's why we need to do the research.
Yeah.
Okay, I was familiar with it about three years ago, and then because it was such a high staff capacity thing, it just kind of spread to behind, and nobody had ever been asked about it. And we've actually had two people just email and uh two weeks ago, um a business attorney, or whatever, had asked about whether we were thinking about program, pay some.
It it might, I mean, I'd love to hear more from Barry, but it might be that it's more of a access supporting of people going through the P N P, kind of at the local level, um as opposed to the separate programs, P N P.
Yeah.
So yeah, I have no problem. I think it's good to see that the staff has a little research on that, and finds out how, how much, how time is giving this.
Yeah, we could, sorry, and we could see it through.
That's a great idea, if you like, to do the working group.
Um will we be responding to to that?
I already have actually been wanting to know that we would talk about the council today, and this program, we have that set in ourselves.
Excellent, thank you. Any further thoughts or comments on that from anybody else there on the screen left? Nope. Okay, um council, sorry, D C Community Force Association newsletter. Um there was something in that one for me. Um this comes in through through the email account. Uh after this, if somebody there's a copy of it, I don't know, I'll be getting, he's reporting a copy of it. Something in there on bio map that I want to forward on to another committee as well. Thank you. Uh and further on that, not, no notice of admission, no motion, no other business, um comments from the public. Annabelle lives in the audience today. Hello, Annabelle. Did you survive the rainstorm?
Sorry, I have some birthday cards to do, and I can make it for one o'clock, and I can make it for two. I usually don't come late, but it's not private.
We we were fifteen minutes late today, so, yeah, yeah, it's all good, thank you.
Uh just before we close up, I just want to, on behalf of Lynn and myself, invite everybody to a hundred people that care for this Thursday. So sharing that, we are uh doing a, bringing together a hundred people, donations of five, ten, twenty, twenty-five, fifty, and onward, uh to support Deanna Wood and her family. Her eight-year-old son has been diagnosed with throat disease, that's how you say it. And uh it's so severe that he is scheduled for surgery in July, and um we'll probably be coming home in a wheelchair for about a year. So their cost plus their having to close down their business is um a bit gut wrenching, and they're having a hard go.
So just said, if you could explain to me, uh will you change the the model for this, as far as how you?
Yeah, we had a, so before with a hundred people at fifty dollars each, but we had, once COVID nineteen came, I had, you know, probably four people who said, we're not able to, we just can't stretch. And so when we read about Deanna's plight, um the group had reached out to her and said, well, how are you doing financially? And she said, I I'm actually not doing well. Um and so we just had some discussions, and she is a person that a lot of people would want to help. And rather than exclude a sense of collective effort, widen it. So the widening is come, be a part of the people with whatever you can muster, and uh just let's move forward, because that's what community strength is.
Like these, did they keep gathering?
Um Lynn and I, we have tables at Bylaw.
Okay, so that's what I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we wanted some financial.
Well, no, but it's good, because you're basically saying it's not just the fifty dollars, you donate whatever you want.
Yeah, so we will be there between four and five, and we are just a collection point, and people have also been mailing, are you transferring money? So we're making it so it, we're and we're not, and that's why we had to choose a cause as opposed to vote, because the stand comes together.
So Lynn, then you would be at Bylaw between four and five on this Thursday?
This Thursday, yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Five?
Oh, five.
Oh, five?
Yeah.
Bring your sweater, or maybe your t-shirt.
Ten minutes.
I still have a little umbrella hat, I think I'm going to start wearing it. Uh anybody else have any comments? I think Drew has something to say.
Well, um today, the government did an announcement on the audit of the P N P programs, let's just forward it to everybody. There's four recommendations that come out of it.
Okay. What is P N P again?
For this moment, program that we're just talking about.
Oh, okay.
You didn't immigrate to figure out, you know, or something with the dog.
We know, but we've got, we've got so many keywords in our life today, like on.
Or.
Basically, they cover performance management in the audit, they cover the preventing misrepresentation, fraud, corruption through this program. Um and a few other recommendations for the program to throw the con to it. Hey, I thought I'd lighten up your face.
Okay, so there's there's fresh stuff on that one.
Yeah.
Yay.
Uh Lisa had no in camera. Uh any further comments before we have a motion to adjourn? Being met, motion so moved by councillor Taylor.
Thank you.
For freedom, thank you for your time.
Thank you, boss. See you Thursday, Charlie.
Thank you.